And final required hearing, which is required. A tax increase is going to occur, which from the budget, the chairman's budget, that would be the case with the increase in property taxes. So at this time, I'm going to ask our information director to run a little video, which I like, it's very informative, and we might all watch all of it. But then Ms. Pollard will come up and give us some additional financial information.
From peaceful mountain towns, bustling metropolitan areas, the small farming communities, Georgia is a great place to live, work, and raise a family. Across the state, the places we call home have their own distinctive characteristics. Each is unique and interesting, the people who live there. But as much as we appreciate the differences in our communities, there's one thing we expect all of them to have in common. We want them to offer us a good quality of life. And for that, we rely in large part on our local governments. From strong public schools to job opportunities. From reliable public safety to well-maintained roads and bridges. From facilities like libraries and public health centers to diverse recreational opportunities. Counties, cities, and schools around Georgia provide the services that keep our communities safe, clean, comfortable, and prosperous. The role of local governments is to provide services that enhance the quality of life and protect the health and safety of citizens. How do we pay for all these services? In large part, it's through our property taxes. Local governments, our counties, cities, and schools, use these taxes to finance services that add value to our property. Things like fire protection and law enforcement. Parks and land use planning and zoning. Sidewalks and storm drainage systems. The construction and maintenance of infrastructure like roads and bridges, and trash collection and animal control. Across the state, property taxes represent the largest local source of revenue for local governments.
I need to pay my property taxes.
Oh, okay. It's through our property taxes that we have local control over the services we use on a daily basis. Things that directly affect our quality of life. But what is the thing for you and me? What value do we really get for our tax dollars? While individual bills vary on average, a Georgia family pays a little more than $1,500 a year in all county, city, and school property taxes. Of that $1,500, what they've paid to support road maintenance for a year is about the cost of a couple of oil changes. Their contribution for library services is less than what you'd spend on one hardback book. What they pay for the county health department is about the cost of a Vodlokov server. And their share of courts and jails for a year is what that's been for three months of a private home security system. Across the state, every county operates in its own way. So the amount you pay and the benefits you receive depend on which county you live in. Some services, including courts and jails, emergency management and vital records archives for birth and death certificates and marriage licenses, are required by state law. Every county must provide these. Others like libraries or parks are discretionary. They are the ones we as citizens want in our communities, but not necessarily something that county is required to provide. But how do we know we're getting what we pay for? And how do we know that what we're paying is fair? For most of us, our home is our most important asset, and it's the most expensive investment we'll ever make. So the property taxes we pay, in essence, they're an insurance policy on our investment. Because they pay for the county services that don't protect our property. Every property tax bill reflects several different components. In addition to our county taxes, if we live in a city, we may pay city taxes as well. We're also billed for schools, which represent the largest portion of the property tax bill, as much as two-thirds of the total amount. When our county commission, city council, and school board adopt these budgets each year, they take into consideration requests and recommendations from citizens, as well as expenditures required by the state or federal governments.
I have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Homeowners, I.
Then they estimate how much can be raised from sources like sales taxes, business taxes, and user fees. The remainder of the budget comes from property taxes. To calculate the tax rate, the percentage that will be charged, the amount needed from property taxes is divided by the total value of all taxable property in the county. This total value, also known as the county tax digest, includes not just homes, but businesses, apartments, industrial property, and farmland as well. The tax rate, that is the percentage we pay, is stated in terms of mils, with a mil equal to $1 for $1,000 in assessed property value. For tax purposes, state law requires property to be assessed at 40% of its fair market value. So if your home is worth $100,000, its assessed value is $40,000. This is the value used to calculate your property taxes. But other factors affect what you're charged. There are various exemptions that can be deducted from the $40,000. For example, the state general homestead exception, some vocal homestead exemptions, and exemptions for people over the age 62, and for disabled veterans. So to calculate your total taxable assessed value, you first subtract the exemptions from your home's $40,000 value. Let's say you qualify for a $5,000 homestead exception, and you're eligible for a $1,000 exemption because you're 62 or older. Now deduct these amounts, and the value you're taxed on comes to $34,000. Then to determine how much you owe, you multiply the assessed value of your property by the milage rates set by the county, school board, and city. So who are the players of the tax process? The Georgia constitution requires that all property be valued in a uniform manner. And the Georgia legislature enacts property tax laws that determine which properties are taxed and which are exempt. Your board of tax assessors is required by law to value your property at its current market value. To do this, the board hires a state-trained appraisal staff. The state enforces the requirement that appraisals be kept at market value by levying a fine on counties that don't keep property values current. Your county commissioners administer the property tax system in your county, but they have no role in appraising, billing, or collecting property taxes. The county board of tax assessors and the tax commissioner carry out those functions independently of the county commissioners. The tax commissioner, an official you elect, sends you your tax bill and collects taxes. Your sheet then distributes the money to the school board, county government, and city governments. But what if you think your contribution in local property taxes is unfair? What recourse do you have? Well, first, make sure you review your annual property assessment notice as soon as you receive it. This notice is distributed in late spring to early summer, and you have 45 days from the time you receive it to exercise your right to appeal. The first step is to appeal to your local board of assessors. If your concerns are not satisfied at this level, there are a number of options for furthering your appeal, up to and including filing a complaint in superior court.
Jim, let's go ahead and cut it right there.
Your assessment notice.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Pollard, if you continue, please.
Okay, there we go. I apologize for those that have heard this for the third time, but we'll go fairly quickly, and then if we have any questions, I'll back up. So today, we're here to have the third public hearing for the milage rate and M&amp;O. We currently are at 6.5 mils. The calculation for property taxes is made up of three different components, with milage rate being one of those. The assessed value, which is, the video mentioned, 40% of the actual fair market value. We are considering the tax digest as a whole. So we look at the entire county, where each individual looks at their own property that Milage rate is $1 per thousand, as they mentioned. So we have our assessed value, and then we have our gross digest, which is all of the 40% value added together for exemptions. Your net digest is after the exemption, so that's what the levy is actually based on. So as the assessed value goes up, according to the taxpayer bill of rights, as assessed value goes up, milage rate goes down, equals your tax levy. If you're going to have an increase in the, if either one of those is going to result in an increase in the tax levy, we have to go through this process. So we've put in paper five-year history that gives you a five-year analysis of what's happened to the digest, how it's increased, how the exemptions have changed, and what's changed. At the bottom, you can see the total tax levy and how that's changed from year to year. So the rollback rate. We're required to calculate the value to date, take the gross value, the gross digest to date, and use that, any increase as a result of reassessments. We have to go back and reduce the milage rate for that value of reassessment to get a rollback rate. And if you don't, then you have tax increases. Another way of saying, basically, what we went through in this ad. So we did that. We advertised the tax increase to 6.93%. That keeps us at 6.5. So it does not raise the milage rate, it keeps it at 6.5. But the rollback rate calculates back to 6.079. And as the bottom of this ad, it gives you an idea of what that does to each property tax homeowner. So it increases, a $450,000 house, the approximate increase would be $25,000, $26,000. And a non-homestead, $425,000 property would be $25,000. Value of one mil. So these are all three of them. The assessed value times milage rate equals the total levy. So you can see the assessed value has gone down from 2008 to 2012, it reached its low, and then it began to increase. The mil rate has changed from 6.5 in 2008. In 2012, it's 8.29. And then it has reduced to its low of 2016 was 6.88, with a proposed milage rate for the 2018 digest year of 6.5. This gives you an idea of picture of the same information. So what's happened to the levy, all the blue chart, the blue on the graph gives you the levy, with the value of a mil on the red line at the bottom. Surrounding milage rates. These are last year milage rates, because everybody's doing the same process currently. Cobb increased the milage rate by 1.7, so that 9.72 goes to a little over 11. I understand Polk is entertaining a milage rate decrease next week from 11.061 to 11.5. So those are the, everybody's went through the same process right now. One things we looked at last, at the last meeting was the percentage of digest comparison, residential to commercial. Why is that important? Residential uses the services. So commercial, the services are available to their employees, but they're not as, we want users of the service. So their employees are on the road, so their employees are calling it public safety. And they assist, and their employees are sending their kids to school, but they're not, the commercial help offset that in many cases. What does this mean to the homeowner? 2017 value, if your house was valued at 169.2, the 2018 would be valued at approximately 182. Keep in mind, that's different for everybody. So someone up there, someone up left, depending on where they are. And the sales around them. That is the assessment notices that went out June 1st, or close there, too. And those values had a 45-day appeal period at the time. And now today, at the bottom part is the M&amp;O. If everything left the same, and your house value did go up 182, you do receive the homestead exemption, then your value in 2018 would be $70,800, your taxable value. And if you multiply that by the milage rate, your tax increase for this year is $33.28 for M&amp;O, 10.7 for debt service, and 15.87 for fire, and 96.66 for school. The total was 156.41, or a monthly amount of $13.03. So where do your tax dollars go? What we're here today is to discuss what's in blue. So the M&amp;O, 6.5, that's the portion that we're discussing today. The remainder is, the debt service is a special district. It's required, you have to have the money to pay debt that the county has. And the fire is a special district. Those are not required to have public hearings. And the school board went through the same process.
Can you repeat that one more time?
Okay. The M&amp;O is where we are today. That's the hearing that we're in today. The debt and fire, they're considered something like special districts, for lack of a better word.
They are a special district, but the district is the entire county.
Right. And school, they've gone through the same process. So they held the three public hearings, and they have sent a letter of recommendation of military approval, and amount of making $187,000. And this goes to your budget. So your maintenance and operations portion of property taxes is used to fund about 40% of the budget. So that's why this is important, that each tax dollar that you pay in the 21%, or the six, or the 6.5, results in 35% of that going to public safety, 24% to public works, and so on. Just breaks it down in the pie chart for you. As the video said, that is what you use to pay for the services. And enough on that.
Thank you, Tabitha. At this time, we'll open the podium up to any of the citizens, while we call it a public hearing. So the board is here to solicit your concerns and bring your share with other citizens. The lecture is open. Just come up and sign up.
Good morning. I apologize for being late this morning, but Frye Road and Mount Tabor has to be looked at. I almost brought aside a girl that called out in front of me. And that, yeah, there's so many wrecks up there. It's a terrible.
I have goodness, it is, but they report they're going to realign those roads so that Frye and Mount Tabor line up, and they're going to cut off, Georgia's in here, but I think they're going to cut five feet out of that hill to make it, it's not as steep, so you get more visibility.
Right. There have been so many wrecks there, and it was, it could have been very tragic, but I ran off, and she ran off, and we were okay. But that's an act. I just had a couple of questions I wanted to ask about the budget. I know I was here last time, but I wanted to look at it before I could make any comments. One of the concerns I had was economic development. I know we are getting some from SLOs for economic development, but that seems to be our, will be our bread and butter if we don't get that going. And I was surprised that there was nothing being, except for the SLOs fund going into that. And I was just curious as to why that was, just.
In the chairman's budget, well, there's $130,000. But if we go to another budget today, that would be taken out, and I would, well, Ms. Pollard just affirmed that.
That's correct.
If you don't mind, I'll answer that question a little bit more for you. Actually, if we don't have that $130,000 in this year, I believe it's the third year.
It's only a year, not a year.
Number two year. That's right, number two year. The third year I'm thinking about is where we cut it from 200 to 130. So I'll explain that. I think I explained it at the last meeting. The, when the industrial, when the Economic Development Board, when they lost their director, the director that they originally had was gone for over six months, they didn't use funds that were in their account. When Robert Reynolds came on board, we were looking at ways to trim the budget, and we sat down with him, Vernon and myself, sat down with Robert Reynolds, and it was agreed upon with Robert Reynolds that we would cut it $70,000 to trim the budget. And we told Robert that if something came up, that they were in a pickle for it, to come back to us mid-year, and we would see what we could do. And that was agreed upon by all of us, okay? Later, the, there's been some changes with the IBA and the Economic Development Board, and they've kind of merged together. Robert Reynolds now is paid to them. The IBA actually leased out the film studio back when we took the other $130,000 out of the budget. And they leased that out, and they were bringing in $480,000 a year. $40,000 money. And they were keeping that. We can get into all kinds of arguments about it, I think it was wrong. We weren't going to give them 130 when they weren't paying for the bonds. And that was when Economic Development and IBA came together, and Robert fell in under them. So yes, they are cut out, but they have not been paying for the bonds on the film studio and other things. In fact, the total bond payments between the IBA and the airport authority is a little over $1 million a year that we're not receiving. And so that's why that was cut out. But to answer your question, it originally was 200 that we were paying, and we agreed upon trimming it down to 130. And that was a mutual agreement between both of us. Then when they didn't pay anything, when they leased out the film studio, it's like, we were giving you 130, now you're receiving 480, why would we keep giving you 130?
I have to disagree, but that's okay. But I think that that is something that we as a community, and I think it was really resounded with the voters, we got to get Economic Development on the board and going. And if, I would think that money needs to be put back in there. That's my personal opinion.
Yeah, and I also add to it, that Tony is right. And I disagree with Tony that it's unfair, because to me, they need to be funded, whether they're funding themselves through the rent, they're giving them from the movie studio, $40,000 a month, which now some things happening there, it might not be a sale, I don't know if they'll say that or not, but they are being funded, they are giving money, okay? We are making the bond payment, that is funding that. They agreed to make bond payment, they're not making it, we are making it. That's like giving them money to do that. So they don't have to take that money under, but if they got that money, it's going to make a lot of money.
And I'm glad to hear that. My other, just an FYI, is I did visit the recycling center. Those people need to evacuate. And I want you to really consider that. I don't know if y'all have been out to see Tony, I think you have, but it is, it definitely needs, they just go look at it, okay? And then my other just comment is, if you drop the 1501, if you drop your lawsuits, that money can go back and help this county, and it can help with the economic development. So I'm respectfully asking you, Mr. Pollard, you, Mr. Collette, and you, Mr. Crowe, to drop the 1501. And let's get rolling with something with the airport. I don't care if it's commercial, or if it is just a great little airport that we can get going with some industry coming in, but that would be some money that can be used towards something else. And that's, that's all I've got to say about it. You don't have to respond.
Well, one other thing about that is FAA has come out recently and said that they dropped, so it's going to remain General Aviation Airport. FAA has.
Right, I know that, but I'm, so why won't you drop your lawsuit? It's been dropped by the FAA.
Lawsuit, we're trying to get the bond, the bond payments.
No, no, against the airport authority.
The bond payments. Well, I feel like the, Brett Smith owes, like he promised to make bond payments, he's not making the bond payments.
But he stopped that. I don't want to argue with you about it. He stopped it because of the 1501, and that you three have done. And your 1501 needs to be.
He's got a contract with them, he can't just say, I'm not in the bank.
He's got a legal binding contract with the county as well.
No, he's not.
No, man, he does not, he does not.
There is no contract between Silver Comet and the county, there never has been.
Well, I miss so.
The county plant's still pending right now.
But yes, there is a lawsuit, there is, he did drop that. He is not paying the bond payments. I understand all that, I'm not here to argue anything about the airport. I just want you three, since the FAA has dropped the 139, I would like you three to drop the 1501. And that way, we can take that money and put it elsewhere. That's all I'm going to have to say. Thank you.
I would like to make another comment. I would be glad today to put back $130,000 into economic development. In fact, I'd be glad today to put $200,000 into economic development. If the IBA and the airport authority will pay their bonds. The bonds that the citizens are on the hook for are $1,640,000 a year. $1,640,000 a year. And I'll do it today. I'll make the motion to put it in the budget if they'll pay that. I'll give $200,000 to receive $1,640,000. As a commissioner, we're supposed to be looking out for the tax dollars. And I can't continue to allow the IBA and the airport authority. And that's why I have to say it. And I've asked Mr. Carmichael since January of 2017 to fix it. And we can't continue to fund them. So we haven't cut Economic Development. They chose not to pay what they were supposed to pay. And so we said, well, if that's what you're going to do, and you're going to run on that, then you don't need our $130,000.
Any additional citizens wishing to speak?
I want to know when this bond issue is, for the movie studio, is going to be gone. We're up, we're on the hook for all this money. I'm a widow. I'm paying a lot of taxes for a very small house in a residential community. Most of the people in my neighborhood are living paycheck to paycheck. And we cannot afford this bond issue. So what I'm saying to you is, when is it going to be paid off? And what do we do to get rid of it? I understand that. I understand that we paid for a movie studio that's not working. And I understand that there's been a bunch of stuff going on with the airport. But my problem is, is I don't see the money going into economic development. I see us becoming a community where we have too many houses, we don't have enough infrastructure, and our schools are busting at the seams. They just clear-cut a whole bunch of land right behind Seven Hills for more housing. And I understand there's another development going in over there. Our schools, right now, cannot hold any more children. But we're getting more citizens coming in, and therefore, we have no businesses picking up the difference between what I see on there as far as what our economic dollar is compared to what Cobb and Polk and even Floyd County, I mean, all the counties around us have more economic development. And I think that we have failed as a county of not putting in more economic development. What is the holdup? Why are we so undesirable? Why can we not attract more business? Where we don't have to pay higher property taxes and higher school taxes, and yet we have no economic development? Either the person who's in charge of economic development needs to be replaced, or somebody needs to start getting busy looking for some business. Is it the fact that we don't have any infrastructure? What is the problem here? Why are people not bringing businesses to us? Do we not have the infrastructure for a business to come in because of roads, sewers, and utilities? What's the deal? Tell me.
I might address that. If you know what went on back in. Back in the late 70s and the 80s, the federal government did a lot of grants for sewer. Most counties took advantage of it. Polk took advantage of it. Cobb County took advantage of it. Paulding County at that time decided not to take advantage of it. So, I don't know why I wasn't here. We have to go back and ask them, okay? I don't think they wanted to. But now, when we go out and talk to businesses, I've talked to plenty of businesses. I know right now, a business would come to the county, but it's not coming because there's no sewer hookup. Businesses don't want to come here and get on a safety time.
No, you can't put a business on the.
You can't. You're right. And sometimes, we've got businesses that have two and three safety times now. And lots of times, they have to have a pump, more often probably than they should. So the problem is, yes, the sewer has a lot to do with it. It's not the only thing. Most people I've talked to, companies, they love the county. They want to come here. But one thing we have to do is start making sure that we can put a little money aside every year to start catching up with the sewer. That's what that would help them out.
Oh, sure. Did you sign in?
Yes. My name is Dawn Erickson.
Okay. Dawn, you have identified our key significant problem. It's not so much the millage rate, which reflects back on your personal property values, but it's a tax base that is anemic. And if you looked at Ms. Pollard's graph up there, it stood out like a sore thumb. We're 12% commercial industrial when no other surrounding county is lower than 27%. Douglas and Bartow are around 38%. So that is the problem. That's why the services that we provide, services that you want, law enforcement, response, there's no other place to get it than the systems unless there are those companies that are willing to come here. We've got some good news here. We've got a Costco that's got a low key. And there's some other things that we have that aren't open for public information yet. But that is the problem. And when that balances out, that's when we will get relief for the taxpayers.
Okay, I have one more question. There is a.
Can I say something?
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
Your question was, why are the businesses not coming here? That was your question, was it not?
Yes.
And you answered your own question. And Vernon answered your question. It's a lack of infrastructure, just a little thing of that nature. The surrounding counties that did take those grants are doing well. So often, we hear, well, we don't have an expressway through Paulding County. Polk County don't either. They have the same road going through as we have. So that's a valid question on your part, and I've asked myself that question once in office. And you've answered your own question. Until we correct our infrastructure in Paulding County, people not going to come here and look for the sewer.
And the grants for sewer no longer invited?
No, they no longer exist. Now, they're, the chairman and myself have sat in a meeting with a bonding company that handled this kind of stuff. And then again, if we do this bottom, somebody's got to pay for it.
Exactly. And the 500 and whatever, million-dollar bond we're right now, how long is that going to last?
That question was a lot.
The payoff on that particular bond is 2030 a month.
Wow.
It was a 20-year bond.
And we're on the hook for that now?
Yes.
Yep. That's what our taxes are paying for is that bond. And somebody is, and somebody is not paying us back that is supposed to be contributing. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Well, clarification on the film studio. And again, that was voted on before. Anybody sitting up here that was on this floor?
I understand.
But.
It's an albatross around our neck. I'm sorry.
But it's not, because it's paying 40,000 a month right now. And it hasn't always been occupied. But right now, Swirl Productions is in there, and they're really enjoying the location. And they're putting 40,000, like Commissioner Parnell said, which comes up to 48,000 a year if they stay for a whole year. So they're making two movies in there right now. I got to tour through it last week. So right now, it's being productive for Paulding County. Now, Commissioner Parnell is also correct in that we need, as this board, as the Industrial Building Authority Board, as the Airport Authority Board, as the Executive Board for the Chamber of Commerce, we need to circle up in an open meeting, lay out all these bonds and what's owed, and what property belongs to who, and get all that settled. And I'm pleased to do that. I'm behind on it. I just have not gotten to it. But I need to leave that.
Okay, I want to ask one more question. There is a piece of property right across the street from the hospital that I understand has no utilities whatsoever. Why can they not tap into the sewer and the water and everything right across the street? They can? Who owns that property?
Did that, I don't know.
Wish to say in public meetings. There's an investment company, I guess, that only.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just see a piece of land that was supposed to.
They're trying to sell it. They talked to a lot of people, you know, they could sell it to people.
Okay. Because, I mean, it's just sitting there, and nothing's being done with it.
Well, they want to sell it. They're trying.
Okay, thank you.
Like you don't have, would you mind to put back up on the screen the report that you had and go to the surrounding counties? I truly believe we, we have in the past, and we need to support economic development. But I think we have to be realistic. It's a simple statement that I made when I say I'd be more than glad to give Economic Development 200,000 a year and go back to funding them if the IBA and Airport Authority pay their bonds of 1,640,000 a year. That's a no-brainer. But we can't sit here and just ignore it. And the chairman said he would lead the charge in this, and I'm not trying to be negative, but I've asked for that since January of 2017. And it needs to be taken care of. The one before that, no, the one you just had. Somebody had sent an email out this morning and talked about Polk County was going to go to 11.5. That's what they were looking at raising there is to 11.5. Does Polk County have a fire tax? I don't think that. So I want you to, when you look at our M and O, and then you look at our fires in there, and then you look at our debt service, we're right there, pretty close to the same. And they're going to go to 11.5. And we talk about, and I'm, I believe in economic development, we talk about, we talk about the number of commercialization dropping in Paulding County. Paulding County, what brought us to the dance years ago in the 70s and 80s was home building. And it brought us to the dance again back in the late 90s and 2000s. And it's starting to bring us back to the dance again. And that number of commercial is going to drop when we've got as many homes being built as it is. And we need to work on commercial. I agree. But we have to be realistic with it. So we talk about Polk, and they said 11.5 is what I was calling. Now, ours is 11.67. So now go to the next screen. Polk County has 28% commercial industrial. Not making excuses, you'd have to look at the surrounding counties to see what's going on. And I understand we only have 12. But within reason, both of our millage rates are pretty close to the same. Whether or not your house will be valued at what it is today, here in Paulding, the same in Polk, I don't know. But as far as the total millage rate, other than schools, we're pretty close to the same. I think sometimes you've got to compare apples to apples. That 12% next year is probably going to be bumping 10. No matter what happens, because we've got so many homes that are already on the books, that were on the books from before this board got here. If we're on the books 10 years ago, it can be out there, and it's going to happen. So anyway, I just wanted to point it out that we've got to more than double that, but yet, look at where they're at on their M and O and their millage rate and their taxes.
And I'll add to it. One thing that hurts us as a county too, and hurts the homeowners and the residential, is that we have the lowest home state exemption. I talked about that last year. I'd like to get it raised. Couldn't get a lot of traction with it. Tell them the numbers won't work out. But that's something in my opinion we need to work on as a county, and increase the home state exemption. Across the board, I think the school board needs to be on board with it too.
And even though we're building a lot of homes, it's worth stating, Cherokee County is building a lot of them, just like Paulding is. They're on the outskirts of Atlanta like we are. But they are keeping pace with their commercial and industrial. And they always have kept pace with actually taking carloads over there to see what they're doing. Okay, anybody else desiring to speak today? Okay, I will close out the public hearing then, and we will move right into our August the 14th work session. I've got mine. So we need to take a break. We will entertain a motion. Well, I'll just adjourn the public hearing, and we'll be back in five minutes to start the work session. Good afternoon. Do not send elected officials to recognize that committee, but we recognize all of your special guests. Appreciate you being a part of your county government. I will do it this far, and I will formally call you August the 14th, work of this work session to order. Thanks, sir. And we are indeed privileged and honored to have Chief Chaplain join with the chair's office to come and bring us our case and leave us in the place to play.
Let's all stand. Salute, pray. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Father, we love you, and we thank you so much for the many blessings of life. And Lord, we do thank you for where we live here, Father. And we know there's a lot of issues, Father, and we know there's a lot of problems, but we know that you always have the answer, Father. We pray God that you'd touch. We pray for the Lord. We pray that you'd touch. I pray that you'd lead them. I pray that you'd guide them. I pray that you'd give them wisdom, Father. I pray, God, that you'd just move in a special way, Father. Again, we pray for all our officers and all our first responders, Father. We pray that you keep them safe. Father, we pray that you build a hedge for everybody in Paulding County, Father. There's so many problems, Father, that, Lord, everybody's having to deal with it, it seems like, these days. But again, Father, help us turn toward you. And we thank you so much for Lord Jesus Christ and the free salvation that's imparted to those who desire, Father. Again, Father, I pray that you'd bless us today in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Chaplain D so much. Under minutes, the July 26, 2018 work session minutes and the July 26, 2018 board meeting minutes are available. And also, the public hearing minutes for the 9:30 AM and 6:00 PM public hearing are available for your review also. Under announcements, it's also a thrill for me today to introduce Jeff Davis, Truth and Nature reporter. He comes up. We wanted to watch a video about his ministry in Paulding County.
Since 2009, Truth and Nature has been able to work with over 300 young men who follow us in single-parent homes. These boys come from different backgrounds and single-parent situations, beginning right here in Dallas, Georgia. God has moved in the hearts of many men in different communities to see this ministry grow. Truth and Nature is an outdoor ministry and mentoring organization for young men growing up without a father in the home. As God continues to move and lead this ministry, we see men in the community following that lead to reach, inspire, support, and engage these young men from follow-us homes through His creation. Our programs consist of things that father and son do in the outdoors and take a concentrated time to walk alongside them during their middle and high school years, mentoring them while also sharing the love of Christ and pointing them to Him as the eternal Father. We have a unique opportunity right here in our Dallas, Georgia camp to reach more young men in Paulding County and the surrounding communities. We have a camp facility that can work with up to 30 young men per weekend, along with 10 mentors to come alongside these boys. Our current program director, Don Brooks, has been running at capacity on and off a waiting list for over a year now, and the current set of programs are running. In Paulding County alone, depending which resource you use, there are a little over 9,000 or 24.6% of children growing up in a single-parent home, many of which are boys without a father in their life. The need is there for these young men to have a role model and a mentoring set. Our programs are proven over these years with many young men making positive choices and turning their life over to Christ. So through some ministry partners in the Paulding community, such as West Coast Church, the Rotary of Paulding County, Mars, and others, we now have the opportunity to serve more young men at our camp facility right here in Dallas. We have funding to get this started. Facility improvements are already happening, and boys are on a waiting list to get into the program, and we have some mentors that are ready to get started as well. So what we're looking for is a program director, someone to help coordinate and spearhead the second set of programs for the follow-us and single-parent boys right here in Dallas, Georgia. So I'm asking, are you a Christian outdoorsman with a heart for leading and shaping young men? Could you give some of your free time to help further this effort? If that is you, I'm asking that you get in touch with me to help spearhead this effort and join our current team in Dallas, Georgia to reach more young men. You see, we have a program model to put this in place, and we'll make the startup as easy as possible, walking beside you in every step. So join us in this effort to help break the follow-us cycle, one boy at a time. We begin to pray about this, and if this is the right direction for you to give back to your community and help shape these young men by God using your talents, both in leadership and. and help shape these young men by God using your talents, both in leadership and in the outdoors, then take a look at our website and hear from boys and moms and how this program has made the difference. And when you're ready, get in touch with me to learn more. Thank you for taking a minute to learn more about this opportunity, and we look forward to hearing from you. Tight lines, steady aim, please, sir.
That will bring a few to God. Maybe we don't have Carrie Davis, the veteran of this couple, as today. But we do have the real Jeff Davis and so good of you. You're such an addition to our community.
Well, I appreciate it. I appreciate the opportunity to get to share with everyone just about Truth and Nature, our current needs, that kind of thing. You know, as you said, we don't have Carrie here with us. She had other things she needed to get done this morning. But my wife and I are co-founders of Truth and Nature. We started it right here in Dallas in 2009. And so, we're almost coming up on 10 years. And what we've seen God do and through the people of Polting County is expand these programs. We've now got chapters in five states across eight locations. We've seen this just grow. And as you heard on the video, we're at capacity in our Dallas, Georgia camp. We've got numerous boys on a waiting list trying to get into our programs, and we're really looking to expand our programs. What Truth and Nature is, is an outdoor ministry for boys that are just growing up without a father. They are in a single-parent home. And we do weekend programs where we have a group of men come in, and they're mentors to walk alongside these young men from middle and high school. We've seen numerous positive decisions. We've seen these young men walk away from hazardous behaviors, make decisions for the Lord. We've seen just numerous things from these young men. And we get referrals now from the Department of Juvenile Justice. We're getting referrals from... I actually get a lot of referrals, you know, from this county and surrounding counties because people have heard about our programs. And so, we're putting the need out there, and I appreciate the opportunity to put this need out there for that. We do have, since putting this video out, we have a temporary solution to get some of the boys off the waiting list this fall. But we're still looking for that program director to get the full new chapter of programs up and running to get more boys involved. Because as you heard, there's over 9,000 children just in Polting County growing up in a single-parent home. And a lot of those are boys that just need that solid male role model in their lives. And we're offering that. Like I said, we've been doing this for 10 years, working with over 300 boys right here in this community. So, we appreciate it. We appreciate the opportunity. I don't know if there's any other questions or anything. We're always looking for partners. There's a lot of people in this community that have partnered with us to make these programs happen. These are free programs. We don't charge these single moms a dime to send their sons through this. We've got local partners that have partnered with us to make these programs happen. And we're very blessed and very fortunate in the fact that we can do it and not charge for these services or anything like that.
Isn't one of the draws all the good food?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Ms. Leslie Brooks is here. Her and her husband, Don, run our chapter right here in Dallas. And her, along with her team, boy, they feed these boys. It takes a lot of food to feed 30 boys over a weekend. So, they can eat. But they talk about how good the food is, and even the mentors, you know, they get to eat real good, too.
Let's give Ms. Brooks a eat. Well, Jeff, thank you for being here. Any questions from the panel here?
Thanks for what you're doing. Kathy of Chick-fil-A wrote a book, and I always said, and one of the things he always worked on was it's better to build boys than to mend men.
Absolutely.
It's a good program.
I agree. Thank you, guys. Thank you for the opportunity.
There'll be a lot of people out there on Channel 23 that hear this also. Also, Channel 23, I'd like to bend to here this morning. It's gonna happen in just over a month. Our ride for wishes, and I've asked our county administrator to come up and just announce that we're working on it. First thing.
Good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to come back up and talk a little bit. I want to thank Stacy Himmel from the chamber. She's here today. She let me come in last week and talk at the chamber, and we're appreciative of that. So, we're just trying to get the message out. September 15th is the date that we're looking at, and all the proceeds go to benefit Make-A-Wish Foundation in Georgia. So, we were in our last meeting, and we have the CEO of Make-A-Wish Georgia here, and he spoke to you guys to let you know what's going on with that. Yeah, I just appreciate the opportunity. Go ahead and once again, let the citizens know, let everyone know about the ride coming up. We're looking for riders, and we're looking for sponsors. So, if you're interested, just go to our website, and on the website, there's a link to it. And you can actually go online to not only participate as a rider, but also as a sponsor, so.
What about volunteers on the day up there?
We do need some volunteers. A lot of our departments have come forward, and several of the agencies we have, but we've got some employees that are gonna volunteer their time on that day. Several different departments, but we can always use the help.
You might just contact you?
That'd be great if they contacted my office. It'd be great. We'd have to sign books up to do it. But we're looking forward to it, and as the chairman says, it's our first annual, so we're looking for this event to be great and to expand on it next year.
What's the charge to register? I've got a ton of greenfields.
There's a fee structure. Typically, it's $20, and that includes a commemorative t-shirt that we'll have. It's a long CT, which is always great, especially at that time of year. It'll have, this first year will have our logo on the front and then the sponsorships on the back. All the platinum and gold sponsors, well, their logos or the name of a family, for example, if a family just wants to sponsor one of those levels. And then for riders, I think it's under, I'll ask Felicia, 10? Under 10, I think it's $10. And that includes also a youth t-shirt to go with that. So, that'll be the nice takeaway that they'll have. And as all of y'all know, I do have a history working with Make-A-Wish and have another event that I'm involved with, them and another county, and we do a long CT shirt, and that's a really big thing that people love to have. So, I'm looking forward to seeing a lot of t-shirts, a lot of long CTs floating around in Dallas and hiring them in Polting County area in the next few months as we move forward with this run.
One business?
That's a great question, Commissioner Crowe, and I appreciate you asking that. It is, it's not a race, it's a ride, first of all. And so, we've got two different rides in one. One is gonna be a family ride, which will be approximately up to two miles in length. And our hope is to have it, all the riders will congregate here in the morning, and then we'll leave here, go up to the Territ Drummond Trailhead, and then the family riders will go towards our chamber, and we'll have a turnaround there. And then the other part of it is we'll have a ride for folks that just wanna get out and do up to 22 miles. And the beautiful thing there is, if you only wanna ride five, that's great. If you wanna ride 22, that's great, too. So, you can do as much or as little as you want, but it'll be up to 22, which equates basically from here to our county line, where the county line is with Polk at the fantastic tunnel on the trail. And that'll be the turnaround place for that, so that'll be approximately 22 miles. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, a carryover from last meeting, I had just one of these. This is, Atlanta doesn't mean Atlanta Airport. It's Atlanta Region Transit Link, which was House Bill 930. And Polting County will be included in the consideration of the 14-county region, 10 districts, I believe it is. But these are available on the back table. There's a lot of information in here on how all the transit operations that exist now around Atlanta will be consolidated, and it'll be driven by a regional approach. So, grab you one of those if you're interested. Now, under invited guests, we have none. Under bid awards, discuss action to award the contract to Southeastern Site Development in the amount of $780,790 for the Greenfield Road Widening and Culvert Replacement Project. And Ms. Pollard and Mr. Tomes are gonna answer questions on this.
Finance received both of these bids, and they're being recommended awards as low bids. But if it's okay, I've been asked, George, just to present them.
Morning.
Morning.
As Chaplain said, we received bids for the Greenfield Road Widening and Culvert Replacement Project from four bidders. Southeastern Site Development was the low bidder for this project at a total of $780,790. The work consists of installing two culvert replacements on Greenfield Road, adding left and right turn lanes at the intersection of 278 and Greenfield, and putting in a center turn lane on Greenfield that will extend down to Greenfield Drive. The work here is approximately 800 feet long. The low bid was within, I believe, 8% of our engineers' estimates, so we feel pretty comfortable going forward with this bid. Southeastern Site has done work previously in the county. We've been happy with their results. So, at this point, we recommend awarding this contract to Southeastern. And I can answer any questions if y'all have any.
Any questions? We'll move on to number two, which I make you responsible for also. Discuss action to award the contract to Barto Paving Incorporated in the amount of $494,614.98 for the intersection improvement project at East Polting Drive and State Route 120, the Dallas Highway that's right there at the Kennedy 100.
Yes, sir. It's post 1. Again, this one here, we received six bids, and Barto Paving was the low bidder. The work consists of adding turn lanes and radius improvements on East Polting Drive, and also some traffic signal phasing changes. That will help this intersection work better, particularly in the morning. If you're there during the AM peak hour, traffic backs up on East Polting pretty significantly. So, we're adding a 175-foot left turn lane at the intersection of East Polting, which we believe is, and is shown in simulations, can help improve signal operations greatly. GDOT has conferred with us on this request, so we've got that approval. We did enter into a development agreement back in February 13th, as y'all approved of, with the entity that's developing the northeast quadrant of this intersection for $150,000 to put in turn lanes for their, along with they provided, some right-of-way that we could insert this project in. So, we have that funding that we put forth towards this $494,000. The rest of the funds for this project will come from SWAS funding. We've done several projects before with Barto Paving. The last one they did, I believe, they had a sidewalk project with us about a year ago, but they also did the work on Bob Grogan Drive or Polting. I'm very happy with that. So, I think we recommend awarding this contract to Barto Paving. And I can answer any questions if y'all have any.
Everybody good?
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Under reports from committees and departments, pleasure to have Ann Littman update us, meeting development director, to give us the update on the building permits and the business licenses.
Like, we're having a few technical difficulties here. We have a screen now, but it looks like the screen is slowly coming up.
Ours has been flashing all morning.
It's been flashing, so. I can see it on the screen, but I don't know how to get it up on that screen. So, I may have to describe it in this... I'm suspicious because only Todd's and Vernon's computer screens work. All right. Thank you, as always, for letting me come in and share some of the building permit and business license data. First of all, total permits issued, they went down a little bit this month. In July, we had 575, and in June, we had 575 and went down to 498 in July. Each month, I track the single-family detached and new non-residential new and additions. The single-family went down to the third month in a row, so for this year, we've had a total of 964. We have had 108 new, or non-residential new or additions. And while we were doing the budget talk, I just did some quick numbers, and that's eight, based on the value, that's 83% residential versus 17% non-residential. For the months that I've done this, I've always told you, I've broken down by post, and I decided to mix it up since I think for the past 91 months, post four has always been the winner of that. I think post one won one month, and I'm gonna go back and figure out when that was, 'cause I remember I was like, wow, post one had more than post four. So, for a couple of years, I've been providing data to the school district based on high school and middle school zones. Those are smaller areas than the posts, because there's five high schools and there's nine middle schools. So, here's just the raw data going back to 2010. North Polting is the highest percentage with 40%, and decided to have a little fun. School data just started in the past two weeks, so I have you to the logos or mascots for the high school. North Polting has 53% of the building permits, followed by East Polting with 21%. And I'll send everybody the breakdown that shows each one. As far as middle schools, not surprisingly, McClure Middle School and Moses Middle School are the two biggest, followed by PB Rich Elementary School, which kind of falls in line with North Polting and East Polting having the most permits. So, there's the breakdown. And those are by their school colors, but I didn't have enough room to put all the mascots in there. So, I just thought that was, it's something I've provided to the school district for several years, and they find it very informative. And one of these days, I will break it down to elementary schools, but there's a lot more of them, so it'd take up probably a week to do that. Occupational tax certificates, as of yesterday, we had 3,066. This shows the breakdown of new and renewal. Most everything's been renewed by now. Renewals will start up in October. And the breakdown between home occupation and commercial, 27% are commercial and 73% are home occupations. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions, and I'll be glad to share this information with all you guys and look forward to sharing data with you next month.
Questions, comments, unless they're all out first? Scott told me not to try to be...
Good stirring, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public participation with agenda items are none. Consider agenda items, we have two. Number one is to authorize the chairman to execute a Norfolk Southern Standard Pipe License Agreement allowing Polting County water system to construct a 54-inch steel casing via Jack and Moore across the railroad right of way to the finished water transmission main. And number two is acceptance of streets for perpetual maintenance, Copper League in post one and Copper Stair Drive in post one. Would any of the commissioners like to transfer one of these two items over to regular business? Hearing none, stay, consider them, into old business, we got none. Under new business, we will, let's see, public hearing regarding the application of the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. And we are going to open a public hearing again, and we're honored to have Deputy Chief Hutton, Colonel Hutton, to come up and to give us a description of this, and then I'll ask for public comment.
Thank you, sir. On this grant, we've been receiving this grant for several years now. But they've awarded us, or we're in the process, $16,885 this year. Last year, we were allotted roughly the same amount. And actually, last month, they finally sent the finalization paperwork that y'all were able to sign off on for Ms. Lonnie and Chairman Carmichael. So, it's a process, and it takes some time. With this grant money, this year, we're still, for the last three years, With this grant money, this year, we're still, for the last three years, we've been trying to get funds to outfit our deputies with ballistic plates that stop rifle rounds and also helmets. So, the majority, or half of these funds, about 50%, will be going towards that, trying to complete that. Currently, we have all of our patrolmen and our school resource deputies, they are outfitted with that equipment. Granted, we had had to use it, but back in 2014, and if I'm not mistaken, it was July 14th, when we had an assailant down on the south side of the county, off of Pine Valley, that was armed with a rifle, and this equipment was not available to our deputies. We've had it for numerous years for our tactical units, but for our patrolmen, it was not. And that, that situation really opened our eyes, and, and with the help of Ms. Taffeta, we, we found some money that we put in place to, to get that in motion. So, I'd like to continue that, that program and finishing outfitting the rest of our deputies that, that are also in need of it for those times that arise. The other things that are, that are listed in there is for different units. The other probably big-ticket item is a, what we call a rack vest, which is, we use it in court, in jury trials and things of that nature, when we have somebody that's a pretty, I don't know the right way to put it, somebody that, that's a pretty bad dude, so to speak. And we put this vest on him. It's, it's a little bit smaller than the vest I have on today, but it goes under the clothes. And if they, if they act out, or they try to run, you hit a little button, and it gives them a jolt, some juice, and it, it helps incapacitate, so you can get them back into, under control. Other items in there are day-to-day items that we currently use throughout the sheriff's office and different divisions. We've got some vehicle equipment and things of that nature in there as well, so I'll be willing to answer any questions that you may have.
And this is an official public hearing, so perhaps before questions, is there anybody, any, any of the citizens that would like to speak on, on this topic, this, this grant? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and just open questions up to the panel.
Okay, sir.
I know Commissioner Crowe's gonna have something to start talking about that vest.
No, but...
Next time we have training, I'll invite y'all, y'all gonna try that. We had one current. It worked pretty good.
I want the butt.
Everybody wants the butt.
There's no point in putting that on Commissioner Crowe. Well, thank you, Colonel Hutton.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all. Appreciate it.
Our enabling legislation allows us to alter the, the agenda as necessary, and we have two of our state delegates here today. We've got Representative Micah Grabley and Senator Mike Dugan, who have come to share with the board on an issue that involves real estate. And in interest of their time, and I think we can handle this in 10 to 15 minutes, I would like to ask for a motion that we interrupt the agenda and adjourn to executive session so that we might hear from them. And we've got other things on the, on the executive session, but we will not cover them. We'll just come back in here and finish the agenda. That would be my plan, in my direction. So, may I get a motion that we adjourn in the executive session?
For real estate.
For real estate, thank you.
I move adjourn second executive session for real estate.
Motion to adjourn second by Commissioner Crowe. Any discussion? All of us in favor say aye. Aye, we stand adjourned.
Recede.
At this time, I'll call the work session back to war and announce that no action was taken in the executive session. Inter resumeing the January word for the new business number two, which is to discuss action to adopt resolution 18-36, setting the village rate for the county MNO.
Okay, I'm gonna, sorry, I'm gonna try and be as short as I can. This, the next three, four items that you have in front of you are regarding the village rate, is establish what the tax rate will be for the upcoming year. The first one is the MNO, and we have a, we've completed three public hearings and advertisements to keep the village rate the same at 6.5. If it's okay, I'll go ahead, and then y'all can just discuss about the okay. If I go ahead and talk about all three, or would you rather read them all?
Um, I was thinking we could talk about one at a time.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so, on new business number two, on the, on the village rate, just open that for, well, just open discussion here. We've already had it brought out in the public hearing, that our tax base is a problem, because so much of it is a percentage of the homeowners that are responsible for the, the large percentage of tax base, about 88%, which is not compared with well with surrounding counties. Before I came on as chairman, one of the things that I would mention is numerous constituents talked about the business application process, the permitting process, and how difficult it was. So, one of the early goals of myself and the board is to try to alleviate that, and working with IT Director in the back there, Will Lyons, we have been working diligently to have the right funding for personnel and for the hardware, software required to have what we call 24/7 government. So, if you so choose to apply for a business in, at 2:00 AM in the morning in your pajamas, that you would be able to do that. Cherokee County has this opportunity, Cobb County has this opportunity, other surrounding counties have it, so we want to be competitive. And we don't have a reputation as being a county that's difficult to do business with. But, with the rollback budget, without any tax increase at all, we don't, we don't have the capability to bring on the personnel that Will Lyons has requested as the Director of IT. We don't have the capability, if you shift over to public safety, to bring on the personnel that Sheriff Gullins thinks we need to have. And I could go right through Parks and Rec, Michael Justice in the back, we have more parks, we have more acreage to mow, we have more maintenance required. So, the troubling thing to me in not being willing to adjust our needed taxes to take care of business, is that we have a goal like 24/7 government, well, at least, can't do that right now. So, it drags on, let's say it kicks the can down the road. The, the other thing that I would mention is that the village rate's not changing in my budget, in the chairman's budget, it's 6.5. But, all that would do, or what that would do is allow us a little bit of infrastructure improvement. If we roll back to the 6.079, we're just gonna do basic, basic service without any ability to work on a project like bringing water, one of Tony's passions, to areas of Post 4. We're not, we're not gonna be able to bring infrastructure of sewer, so that other commercial ventures might be able to tap on that sewer and increase the commercial and industrial part of our tax base. So, yeah, I don't like to raise taxes, I don't like to think about raise taxes, but if your family grows, it costs more for food and cheerleader uniforms and a band instrument. If you're, if your schools grow in numbers, you're gonna have more desks and books and more schools. And likewise, when your county grows, you're gonna have to raise the tax level, or you can't get to where you want to go. In 2008, it was brought out in the charts. In 2008, we, our tax digest was about $250,000 higher than it is today, but we have 35,000 more people. The math just doesn't work out. And, yeah, we gotta work on economic development, most definitely. We've got to bring commercialization by end of the calendar, more commercial companies. But I've communicated every month with the commissioners, and they know where I stand on it, but most of you in the audience don't, so, yes, I'm, I'm for keeping the village rate the same, and that does cause a tax increase. It'll cost you, if you own a $200,000 house, it'll cost you $4.33 a month extra.
Dave, I appreciate you bringing that out. The infrastructure, my, my pet peeve has been and always will be water, especially to those who have no water, the wells are gonna dry. And I put that above anything else in the county, and I've said there's more than one time you can live without anything in your house other than water. However, water is not paid for with taxpayer dollars. It's just put in the water authority, and raised it all under the sewer. So, having said that, I realize that our tax base is rooftops, and we keep saying this without saying it, the more rooftops we get, the more we overload our roads, our schools, our services from the county. We need to address that, and we have, I believe somewhat as a board, in the moratorium, changed stipulation, but some things we're talking about here, we're talking around and not about them. So, there's other ways to look this up than in the fact that let's just raise taxes.
Other comments on business number two?
Dave, I agree with what you said, and I have been the one that has been beating that drum the last five years. There is a cost to doing business, there is a cost of level of service. I, I personally think that cost is around 6.5. Last year, there were three of us that voted under that cost of 6.5. It was myself, Mr. Davis, Mr. Carmichael. We worked on that budget for a long time. Last year, I felt like that's where we should be, and my opinion hasn't changed this year on that, as far as what we did last year. There have been several of us highly criticized for taxes, highly, and two of them down on the other end didn't deserve it. Didn't deserve it. Eight years ago, when I got in office, somebody said, "You got a microphone, use it." And I have. I've never said anything that was wrong to anybody. I've always treated the public and anybody that came up there to speak with respect, and I'll continue to do that. But them two on the far end got a beating over raising taxes, and the two on the far end did not do it. So, guys, I apologize that y'all got the war out for it. Should've been directed only to me, but that's not the only thing, and that's okay. I am very good with it. But when you go through what you go through the last six months, and you're hung out to dry on taxes, you have to look at the whole thing. I've had some very close friends of mine call and share some long conversations when it comes about taxes. I've had people that I don't know call, talk about a lot of things when it comes about Had some good conversations about it, and they all bring up very good points, all of I haven't had one call, not one call, that's told me to leave it at 6.5. Not one call. I believe in the process, I believe in going through the process, and I believe the process gets things out. I think a little bit more of the process today is gonna get a few more things out, hearing a couple items down. We went ahead and advertised so that we could have the hearings, so we could hear from the public. That allows us to do that, and it allows us to do anything from the 6.5, rollback to whatever, or anything in between. And again, I believe in the process, we've done that. We had the last public hearing this morning, and here we are now. Sometime this afternoon, 2:00 or after, we're gonna go ahead and vote on things and get this done. Last year, I don't know, it could be a coin toss whether it was the third vote was myself or the third vote was Ron. I don't know who wants to take credit for it. I, I feel like I took credit for it through time. But Ron was there, and maybe, kind of said the other day, maybe he took credit for it. I don't know if either one of us really wants to take the credit for it, but I'll do it. I took it, I did it, the third vote for 6.5. But if you go back through the videos and you watch what's happened in the last four years, when Tommy Graham was sitting down there where Commissioner Collette's at, we both were preaching the same, same thing. There's a cost in the level of service and a cost to doing business. But after what we've went through, we've worked on another budget, we've worked on another budget with Tabitha, and not that we can't make some changes or amendments or anything else, but we've got a budget that we can pass today that's for the rollback and not a 6.5. I don't know who's gonna be that third vote. I might take credit for that today, but I'll be voting for a rollback today. And after what we went through, I don't feel like I had a choice. Do I 100% think it's the 100% right thing to do? No, I don't. But because of the circumstances that have happened over the last three or four months, I feel like in my case, it has to be the right thing to do. We have voted through time to build a new park out in Post 2, and I consider the voters voting for that too, because they voted for Splotch. Justice needs people to take care of that park, and a rollback doesn't allow him to have everything, he needs to do what he needs to do. The employees have always done what they can do, whether the public thinks they have enough to work with or not, the employees have done what they can do in their departments with what we've given them through the years, whatever that is, and, and I'm sure the employees and department heads will continue to do that. We've got a new jail coming online, it'll be coming up soon. Sheriff's gonna need some other people to be trained sometime later in the year to be prepared, so there's a lot of things to consider. But for now, I'll quit using the microphone, wanted to let you know where I stood, and wanted to apologize... wanted to apologize to the two men down at the other end of the table for what you've had to get through. Don't even apologize, we signed on and we'll take it.
How much has changed in post three since last year? Last year, I got a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails asking, "Please roll it back." That some people in this county live on very fixed incomes and their incomes are not going up. And I understand you've got one side where you need, there are things that we as a county need, but you can't just say, "Okay, all the single moms, widows, low income, you know, I don't care about you." Represent them all. Again, this year, I probably got about 30 phone calls and emails, more phone calls and actual conversations, very few emails this year. Todd said he didn't get any emails, I got one email asking for an address and that was from our chairman. Other than that, I didn't get any. Same thing, same thing I heard last year. People are still hurting out there. $50 makes a difference, $25 makes a difference when you're moving on social security. So I just want to say that, just so you know, when you're sitting up here, you've got way both sides. People put you here, people take you out. Do you listen to the people or do you do something else? And that's, that's the decision you have to make. And using my face of that, I usually choose to listen to the people unless they're saying something ungodly and ask for a rollback from out of God. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes, speak for a minute, Dave. It's a tremendous responsibility to sit in this chair. A lot of things that this board does, but the passing of a budget and setting the military rate is one of those I consider to be maybe a necessary evil. There's a saying that I like, it's taxation is theft. And it is. It's legal theft, but if you don't believe in theft, try not paying your property taxes here and see how that, see how that works out for you. There's a time to increase revenue on the, within the government. I came to a position last year, I was the, I guess it'd still be, to be determined if I was the second or the third vote, but I was one of the three. Felt like it needed to happen last year. It's not a vote that I like to cast because I hate taxes. I don't like paying them and I don't like, I don't like them, but they're, again, necessary evil. Last year, I felt we were in a position that revenue needed to go up. And I don't believe we're in that position, I don't believe we're in that same position as you now. Does that mean we're gonna get to do everything that we would want to do? No, it doesn't. There's another saying about, you'll hear it a lot of times, some people running for office, you'll hear, "Oh, we need to run the county like the government, we need to run the county like a business." And as far as being responsible with money and spending less than you take in and all, that's, that's very true. But companies exist to get bigger, take in more money to increase their profits. And we exist to provide services for the citizens who live here. The feedback I've heard from constituents that have called me or grabbed me in the grocery store and, they like to grab me in the grocery store, by the way. They don't see me in the grocery store, I'm looking for cereal and I want to talk about my tax assessment. But that's okay, we, we enjoy that. But the, what I'm hearing from folks is, is they're not looking for that type of growth in their county government. So we've been working, I know, up until last night, I think I got off the phone with Vernon at, it was probably close to 11 o'clock last night, all of us have been working on this, trying to come up, come up with where, where are we gonna be with this? The rollback budget that Todd mentioned includes things that I felt were necessary and I'm happy to be able to support that center.
I want to start and I'll make it quick, seeing friend John Dean in the back there, we get bothered with school budgets and other challenges. My dad, God rest his soul, was the superintendent of city schools in Champaign, Tennessee, kind of like junior high school, but there are, as all these commissioners have said, tremendous challenges. How many of y'all live on a path? I live on a path with eight families and lived there for 35 years. It was gravel, a lot, since it's hilly, it's a lot of big gravel. And when my oldest daughter was able to drive, she only knows 50 miles per hour, so she'd have to drive down her three quarters of a mile path, 85 miles an hour, it's not real good for the tires and the front end. So in 1992, after we lived there five years, we got the community together, eight families, and you know, we, we got a pretty good deal here with this asphalt company, listens to asphalt, our path. And only five of the eight families wanted to participate. I hope you can see the tax parallel. We don't, we don't have, whatever the percentage is, what is 5.8 got? We don't have that ability with paying our taxes. So 62% of people lived on our path were willing to pay to asphalt the road. And you know, it has been for a long time then, the vehicle maintenance has gone way down. Can you think of Paulding County with all gravel roads? Really, the reason I brought my dad up is because he always would say, "It's a privilege to pay taxes. It's a privilege to pay taxes and share expenses in a county or in a school system." So just share that, you know, you want the phone to answer it when you dial 911, you get your garage is on fire because you got a shore or something and you'd like the fire department to show up. We all know those things, it was brought up in the very start of the public hearing with that video. And we know we've got plenty of challenges in the county and we'll face those.
And they're gonna continue to answer the phone.
So new business number three is discuss action to adopt resolution 18-37, setting the military rate for the fire district.
This is the same type of resolution. The fire district is a special district within the county, but it's countywide. And this sets the military rate 3.10 and basically funds the fire department, which is a growing fire department. They're looking to add a new fire station as well as at least nine firefighters to staff that fire station. So this, this will fund that.
Any discussion?
No, that's something the voters voted for, from two to five mills. We started off at two mills, we went to 3.1 a few years back, so that we could take care of some other fire department needs. So far, that's handled on its own, it's gonna be okay with the new firehouse open up, so I think we're in good shape there.
Anyone else? New business number four is discuss action to adopt resolution 18-38, setting the military rate for the bonds.
This is similar to fire district, it's a special district countywide. These are basically to fund the debt that exists within the county. And the handout that I gave last week, the very back page, and I have a few more of those if anybody gets them, give the total amounts of the debt. 2.07 doesn't completely fund the debt this year. It uses about $2 million of your existing fund balance that's there. Fund balance exists with debt because some of your debt is paid in August and taxes are not received until October and November. And then the remaining, or most debt will pay in August and in February, for when the principal is coming in.
Any discussion? New business number five is discuss action to adopt resolution 18-39, setting the military rate for the Paulding County School District.
Can I interrupt? And that goes back to new business number four?
Yes, sir, let's go back to new business number four.
Dave, can I, one second.
Only one interruption in the chair.
Mrs. Brazil disappeared with us, she wants to speak, all the information she needs. She has somewhere she has to be and I didn't know when would be the appropriate time to let her speak.
You could do a motion to take the agenda out of order and allow her to speak.
So would, would, would we allow her to speak and then go back to number?
Yeah, she would go back to the agenda out of the last call and you would just be allowing her to speak out of the order of the agenda. We have done this kind of thing before.
I make a motion that we hold off where we are and allow the citizens to come speak and we'll get back on the agenda.
A motion by Commissioner Powell, also second?
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Crowe, any discussion? Hearing those all in favor, say aye. Ms. Stephanie Asworth, Brazil, you would come forward and share with your thoughts,
First and foremost, thank you for having me today. I really appreciate your time and allowing me to speak. So today, I wanted to let you know that the special needs community is requesting your support. We have many special needs individuals, both children and adults in this community that, for lack of any other way to put this, have been slighted. These individuals do not have recreation needs met, they do not have personal needs met, this extends across the board. So today, what I'm asking for is the ball field at Burn Henry Park be completed for special needs. This was originally on the, the plans for the park and currently it's sitting there growing weeds. I also request that we look towards building a playground to accommodate special needs and that all parks become ADA accessible and certified in this community. Have you ever been to the Special Olympics? They're held at Paulding County High School. Do you know how many children participate there? Ballpark, 300 this past year. That's just the ballpark count, that's not exact. That's not all of the special needs children in this community. That's only the ones that have the ability and the age to qualify to participate. That's just a small percentage, guys. How many in this room is here to support or has a special needs child or a family member? Y'all, that's just a small quantity in this community. That's not even tip of the iceberg. We need to do what's right for these kids and these adults. They need to have equality in our community. Thank you.
I want to assure you that you have the support of this board, you have the support of Michael Justice, and we'll soon be bringing something before this board, but I want to tell you thank you for coming out and leading the way in this. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll return to new business. Oh, we're on.
Island four, we go back to island four.
Back to number four, which is discuss action to adopt resolution 18-37, the military rate for bonds.
Okay. We kind of went past that before I felt like we were done.
Any discussion on number four?
I'm probably the only one that's said out publicly over the last few months that there's more to the budget than this, than just focusing on just the budget of the MNO. The voters voted on a jail for us to spend up to $77 million. We actually bonded 72 million, feel free to tell me anything that I'm wrong with. We bonded 72 million and that project's going on back behind the courthouse now. We bonded that earlier this year. It was a good time, good decision, it was time to do that. And we're gonna be having payments that come out to pay for that. Our first payment's gonna be in this budget cycle. So when we were talking about, when I was talking about in public about the budget and MNO and a 6.5 mill rate, this board had been back and forth and different ones of us thought different things, but we were looking at, at that time, not doing anything with the debt, leaving the bond debt at a mill rate of 2.07 and paying it out of fund balance for this first payment this year. So we went through what we've gone through the last four, five, six months, and now it looks like we're probably gonna have a rollback. We've still got that debt to pay. And we were gonna do that next year because we were trying to balance out things and not put everything on taxpayers' back at one time, even though to remind you that the taxpayers overwhelmingly voted for the jail. And we were looking at it for a couple reasons. One was if we looked at keeping the 6.5, we didn't want to put that out there on the taxpayers. But two, we wanted to see that jail coming out of the ground, wanted the public to see that jail coming out of the ground next year when it came to budget time and then deal with it at that point. So we've got to make a decision whether we leave the 2.07 mill rate or we add on 0.53, I believe, in order to fund that, which is gonna make that go to 2.60, not 2.07. And so I'm gonna tell you just how it is. We're gonna roll back probably this afternoon, less than what that could go up. And that's why I said earlier, there's some conversations out at different meetings that there's more to a budget than just focusing on that MNO. So if we do a rollback and we've taken some things out of fund balance in order to make some things work, we've still got to deal with that, whether we leave that bond at 2.07 or we raise it up to 2.60 because the voters voted on it and that's what we will have to do, whether it's this year or next year. Or we do something in between this year and then ease the rest up next year. But as it stands right now, 2.07 doesn't pay the bills, we're gonna be taking, I think, a little bit shot to, out of fund balance from that to be able to pay it out of the debt fund balance. So I at least wanted to put it out there because 2:00 comes when we vote on something, I don't want somebody to, yeah, talk about that. And, so I guess I talked about that. Put it out there.
Thank you.
Anything else for you, Mr. Chair, on that issue? Okay.
Anyone else?
No, I will say that citizens who don't want them to pass the jail, they have already taken out the bonds, so that's something to think about.
Okay, new business number five is discuss action to adopt resolution 18-39, setting the military rate for the Paulding County School District.
Okay, the school district goes through this very same process and they finished theirs a couple weeks ago and then they provide you with a letter. And this letter is requesting that you maintain the current military rate of 18.879. This is required because you are the tax establishing entity, so you have to approve the military rate. However, if you don't approve the military rate that the school system has recommended, it goes to court. And in past history, counties have lost, so.
Every time.
Yeah. Yeah.
So the option is pass it?
That's the option I said.
Any other comments? New business number six, action to adopt resolution 18-40 authorizing the tax commissioner to retain a 2.5% fee for collecting the school tax.
So of this 18.879 that goes out on account of tax bill, you pay that amount to the tax commissioner and the tax commissioner remits those funds to the school board. That process, this is a sharing arrangement between us and the school board, more or less, to allow them to pay a portion of our assessment cost, our tax commissioner cost, and any other additional costs that is incurred in providing homeowners with that bill and collecting those taxes. And it's 2.5%, which has been the same for as long as I can remember.
So that means they appreciate everything that Jane Stokes and his team do.
That's right. They're very appreciative of Jane Stokes and his team. And Bill wants him in his team. Don't leave him out. Check what you want from Bill.
Well, and the cost of us doing that for them, you figure percentage wise, we're right there.
And I did that.
That's right.
And it is, to add up the total cost, and I probably didn't have everything in it.
Right.
And they're remitting about 60, we're remitting about 60% of the taxes collected. They're paying about 60% of the cost of that service.
Okay, new business number seven, discuss action to adopt the fiscal year 2019 budget.
Okay, so June 1st, we put a budget out. That's the same one out. There have been a few ideas that have been tossed around. However, we've only released the one at 6.5. So I'll let y'all make that discussion.
And I know commissioners have come in and had good discussions with you and the county administrator and the operations manager. So I appreciate that, that y'all had that down. And so I'm sure some of you'd like to expound a little bit.
Well, I will first. I'll tell you first if you don't, what happens if you go to the sixth, that sometimes the way government works, it's hard, what you're supposed to do in a textbook approach is establish your budget. You establish your budget first, then you go back and you establish your millage rate. And your millage rate is what funds the amount needed for, to provide that budget. We all know that's not reality. That's not the way it works. You have to know what citizens are willing to pay. And then if citizens not willing to pay for them, then you have to find another source of revenue or another way to pay for it or take it out, eliminate expenses. So if you, if you're not going to fund it, fund for the service to be provided, then you have to reduce, or you're going to reduce your revenue, not going to fund it, and it's best to take the expense out. So if by chance you are, the difference between the millage rate, so the 6.5 and the 6.079 is 1.8, a little over 1.8 million dollars. So in the budget that you have before you for the June 1st budget, you have a use of fund balance in the general fund along of 2.8 million dollars. So if you leave this budget, you're using 4.6 million dollars and of fund balance. Now, several years ago, we have a fund balance policy that requires that you retain at least a minimum of 25%. That's critical. That doesn't even get us to the first, that doesn't even get us to the first tax bill that's collected. We will be out of money if you go down to 25%. So you're going to issue notes, you're going to borrow money, pay interest on that if you drop to that, to that level. Several years ago, we had a healthy fund balance. We're not at risk of that. But several years ago, we tried to figure out a way that we could use some of the fund balance and, but you can't balance the budget operationally with fund balance. If you do that, you'll run out of money. So if my collections are 100,000 every year and every year I spend 100 to 20, even if I had 200, eventually I'm going to run out of money. It's no different. It's the same. So what y'all, what the board, I'm not sure who was in the seats at the time, but decided was that we'll use it for capital expenditures. So if you have a capital one-time purchase, you can make a one-time purchase, but it can't be recurring. So you can't hire people. You can't pay your postage. You can't pay your operational expenses. Those things are coming in year after year after year. You can buy equipment. That's a decision you make this year. It'll be a decision you make next year. And you have the ability at that time to say, no, I'm not going to, I'm not going to make that purchase. With that, you can't go to 4.8, your balance and your budget using, you can't use 4.8 million dollars in, in fund balance because your total expenditures, your total capital purchases in this budget are 2.7. And then you have the one-time capital expenditure at the landfill, which is 1.2, but only 200 of that is operational. So only 1 million of that. So you could go to 3.7. And that's all of our balance that you can balance, that you can use and say you balanced your budget revenues, recurring revenues and recurring expenditures. So with that being said, it will take some, or I would recommend some modifications to 6.5 if in fact you're going to roll it back. And we've talked about some of those. What we've talked about has increased, have increased some of our revenues. I'm not 100% confident in most of those, in some of those, but I'm 95% confident. Shaw-Paulding, that's all I can say. The sales tax revenue for this year increased a million dollars and typically it only increased 200,000. So what drove that other 800,000 dollars, and I have budgeting for that next year, those can be a little risky. We talked about that. If the department revenue made a mistake in the sentence, but then they could in return want us to pay that back. In the graph that I gave to each one of y'all, it is pretty steady. So it follows the same pattern, month to month to month. If it were one month, I'd say, no, something's wrong. But it doesn't appear that way. So that was a million dollars in revenue, additional revenue. Increase the property taxes by 1.8 if that's the decision that you decide to take. Some of the other revenues, we've tweaked just a little bit, not anything to talk about today. The expenses, we reduced, there are no new personnel in there. You have two, five detention officers, I think, that are to hire in March, but that's it. No additional, additional personnel. And capital, we reduced the capital that's related to any of those personnel primarily. There's a few other capital items that were taken out to reduce the use of fund balance to 2 million dollars. But it's time. It's time. There's no room to move. It's taking revenues and budgeting them at higher than what's probably with a little break that we hope to see. And it's, your expenditures are being reduced as well.
So what we need this afternoon to be able to vote and accomplish a budget is communication with you on exactly what those reductions are going to be. If the.
That hasn't been, we've talked.
If that's, I have two. I have two, I sent one out late last night. And that's the second one. If that's the one that gets three votes, then it's done. But if you want somewhere in between, then you need to let me know.
We worked on that. Took about seven and then you stayed. Got that out. Thank you for that.
Okay. Any other discussion on number seven? Number eight is discuss action to authorize the chairman to approve and execute the application for the GDOC fiscal year 2019 local maintenance and improvement grant, L-MIG, in the amount of 1,833,394.70. And required a 30% match bond of 550,018.41 to be used to null and patch and resurface county rooms.
The L-MIG is funded from the state motorfield collection. We've been getting this grant or previous incarnations of the grant called different names for many years now. This is the first time we've brought this before the board to ask for approval from the chairman to sign. The L-MIG is formula based and ratio based. Basically takes into account your county's population, amount of road miles that you maintain versus the state population and the amount of state road miles that are maintained. Based on the 2019 formula, Paulding County will receive 1,833,394.70 in funding. By law, we are required to provide a 30% match for that funding. Paulding's 30% match would equal 550,018.41. As you had said, you know, we plan to utilize L-MIG for road paving, use it for other needs, but typically it's been road paving in Paulding. To receive the funds, we're required to complete an application containing the words to be accomplished, provide a project list, cost estimate, and anticipated let date for this project, which we have furnished. You know, this is a beneficial program for the county as our annual paving costs are well in excess of the L-MIG and match. So we recommend the chairman and the board to approve, to execute this contract. Then I can answer any questions.
Could you repay my pass?
Do I discuss this in public?
Questions for Mr. George?
Where are we getting the 550? We, we talked about that. We put it in general fund. That's our first option. And we have a second option. We will find money, right? For this match.
Can I add something?
Yes, you can.
In George's original request, the 550 is included in the general fund. And the budgets that we've worked with, there's been no discussion of eliminating anything from the L-MIG. So the budget is still includes 550 in general fund. The option that you have is, and to supplement funding, there's not a mysterious pot running somewhere, but we have the SPOST, which does fund transportation projects. And it will, you can use those SPOST funds for this project. However, if you do that, the price of construction of those projects is really, really expensive. So this is the better part, which could be, of one of those, of one of those projects. So it's 550,000 dollars away from one of those other projects when this is for your patching and annual maintenance, which is not what you intended for SPOST.
All right, that's the conclusion of our regular business. We do have executive session for personnel real estate pending and potential litigation. Hopefully that can be concluded before our regular two o'clock meeting. At this time, I'll thank everyone again for participating and be involved in the county government, particularly during the tough season of making a budget. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, or most of you go into executive session.
Make a motion, we go into executive session for personnel, real estate pending and potential litigation.
Your motion is the second. Motion is the second. All those in favor, say aye. We'll go to the executive session. We have a call. I'll call the Paulding County Board of Commissioners, August 14th, work session back to order and announce that we have taken no action in the executive session. So I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn. And you might make a motion also at the same time when we would convene the two o'clock meeting.
Make a motion that.
Adjourn and when you.
Make a motion where you adjourn and we'll start back at 2:20.
Is it the second? My motion is the second. We adjourn now and then come back at 2:20. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here you go.